Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 6th City Council meeting. Again, to remind people that the agendas come out on our website on the Friday before our Monday meetings, please always go get a copy of the agenda so that you're aware of all the things that'll be discussed. We're gonna start with roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Aye, you're here.
Alderman Rivera. Alderman Florian.
Here.
Alderman Hayes.
Here.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we're gonna have the invocation by Pastor Pat Hyman from the Power Prayer Ministries. I saw her. Okay.
Good evening. Hello, Mayor, and to each and every one of the elected officials, to the community at whole, God bless you. I would like to read Romans 14 and 19. It says, "Let us therefore follow after the things which make for peace and things where which one may edify another." As we come together tonight, we're coming together to lift up this community, to lift up the elected officials, all of the administrators, all of the residents of the Lake County. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you, and we just wanna say thank you more than anything else. God, we give you glory, we give you honor, and we give you praise. We thank you for every opportunity, Father God, to just shine the light on who you are and what you're about. And Father, as we lift up this community, as we lift up this meeting on tonight, and for all of those who are involved, and for every concerned person, Father, we give you glory and we praise you. Father, we thank you for your word, God, that tells us to edify each other and to believe and to pursue peace. So, Father, we just wanna say thank you for peace. And Father, thank you, God, for everything that you have already done in this community. Now, Father, we believe you for even greater. We loose angels on assignment, and we thank you right now, God, for protection, Father God, over each of us, Father, and over this community, as well as this nation, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow. Did we do that again? Love that.
Again, thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. I just have a few comments. Today is Casimir Pulaski Day here in the state of Illinois. Pulaski was born on this day in Warsaw, Poland in 1745, and on this day, we honor Pulaski, who died in 1779 while fighting for America in the Revolutionary War and is considered by historians as the father of the American cavalry.
That's right.
At this time, I'm going to, well, first off, I will say, March is Women's History Month. So, I'd like to ask Madam Clerk Kil Kelly, Alderman Woman Edie Newsom, Alderman Woman Sylvia Bolton, and Alderman Woman Lynn Florian, and any of our female staff that's out there, could you please stand? I'd like to recognize these incredible ladies for all that they do. What I will say is, here's to strong women. May we know them, may we be them, and may we raise them. So, thank you, ladies, for your contributions. This Sunday, March 12th, many of you may have realized this already, but it seems early to me, this weekend, the clocks spring forward. I'm used to April, so this is a little early for me, but we need to realize that spring is coming, so turn those clocks one hour ahead Saturday night into Sunday. You don't wanna be late for church, so make sure you do it. And while you're thinking about it, if any of you have any of your carbon monoxide that still have batteries, please change those as well. Thank you to all the residents who completed their water pipe inventory initiative information. Marvin Coleman from our engineering department continues to do door-to-door. Again, a couple of you have asked about, we had said that we would have a city sticker dry for those who submitted their surveys back. That will be, I believe, on March 14th is when the date is for that. If any of you are still not sure how to complete the survey, please call 857-590-4624. And that is to test for your lead pipes in your home, and there's a survey sheet to fill out.
Excuse me, Mayor, give that number one more time, please.
City vehicle stickers are on sale. I've seen many of you here already. The lines are pretty busy. The easiest way to get your, they're pretty busy. The easiest way to get your vehicle sticker is online, but you may also purchase through mail, at currency exchanges, and in person at City Hall. To find out more about getting information and the applications, go to our website at waukeganil.gov. But like I said, I've seen many of you early in the morning till right at that 5:00 time that you're here getting them, so thank you. The Lake County Youth Summer Employment Program is taking applications. The application and further information are available at the county's website at lakecountyil.gov. Two local job fairs are coming up. The Lake County Forest Preserve is hosting a job fair on Thursday, March 16th, at Greenbelt Cultural Center, and on Saturday, March 18th, the Navy Civilian Job Fair will be at CYP Youth Center at 2007 Virginia Avenue in Great Lakes. Additional information may be found on our website. The Waukegan Park District is celebrating International Women's Day this Wednesday, March 8th, with local guest speakers, performances, art show, and more. Additional information is available on the park district's website. And finally, our police department recently rolled out an anonymous tip app, and I'd like to call interim Chief Navarro up to talk just briefly about that. We changed your podium signs.
So, we do have a new crime tip app that's in place. It's currently available on your Android devices, on your Apple devices. All you need to do is go into your App Store, you search Waukegan PD. The app will come up, download it, and any tip that you wanna give the police department, please feel free to utilize it. It's a third-party app. Your information will remain anonymous, so the police, well, this is the police department, will never receive any type of information on where it's coming from. So, just critical that you know that it's entirely anonymous. It has also another option on there where, if you wanna register with that third party, you can, and what we would use it for is to send out information. So, if there's some kind of a, and a community alert we wanna put out, or if there's a need to ask the public for assistance in a particular case, we can also put it out through the app. But again, that's totally voluntary. You don't need to put any of your information into the app if you wanna report a crime tip. So, please download it and utilize it. We need your help, and hopefully, you'll end up doing it, and thank you very much.
Chief, what's the name of the app again?
It's Waukegan PD. Just put that into search, and the app will come up.
Got it. Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. Any other questions on it? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. That concludes the mayor's comments. So, we're going to move on to resolutions, proclamations, presentations, and appointments. The first one will be by the Waukegan Public Library, and they're doing an autism presentation. You're gonna have to give me time. I'm used to this side, so I gotta adjust.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jennifer Cordova. I am the Communications and Community Outreach Manager at the Waukegan Public Library.
Hello, everybody. Hello, hello, everybody. City Council, the Aldermans, Mayor, hello. Greetings. My name is Diana, mother of Sir Ian Leroy, and Harmony here, and you got it.
The Library Foundation and host Diana, community member, advocate, and mom invite you to an important fundraising event on Sunday, April 2nd, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. to enhance awareness about autism and help improve the library environment for students with developmental disabilities. Join us for food, drink, raffles, and an art show by local students. Support groups and social service agencies will also be on hand to share information. Funds raised will be used to create an accessibility collection of learning materials, sensory-friendly tools, and adaptive toys and technology to support skill development. We will also remodel a kid's meeting room into a more sensory-friendly chill zone for students and families.
All right. This is a good point to clap. Yep, this is a good point. There we go. There we go. All right, all right, all right. Sir Ian, you wanna introduce yourself? Say hey, everybody.
Okay. Harmony 2-17 is 2023.
Okay, what's your name?
Sir Ian.
How old are you?
Forty years old.
All right. Where do you go to school? Keshet?
A Keshet School in, yes, yes, yeah. Yes, that's right.
You wanna show some of your artwork?
That's right.
Should I hold it up?
That's all for you. All right, this is SpongeBob SquarePants.
Okay, this is SpongeBob SquarePants. So, we'll have to have.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll have. Just to, you know, share a little bit of Sir Ian's story. He's autistic. He has words. He goes to a wonderful therapeutic day school. Alderman Kirkwood has been advocating for my son for the past six, no, about four years, along with Dr. Harlan Shipley and another great advocate, Shira Schwartz. Great team. I thank God for them. So, my son has a great support system. He's doing a lot of things now, and the vision that I had about two years ago was to Light It Up Blue in Lake County. The world lights it up blue on April 2nd, and you can see some pretty cool pictures on YouTube and whatnot. So, I have purchased light bulbs. We're gonna have an event. I wanna give the light bulbs out. We're gonna Light It Up Blue at the Waukegan Public Library. They have been so gracious to partner with me, and, you know, just, I'm just really, really grateful for the Waukegan Public Library. I've seen that they didn't have anything too much for children on a spectrum and people on a spectrum, so all the money that we raise is gonna go to purchase these items, and our end goal is to create a chill zone sensory room so that they have a place there for them as well, as they are part of our community. And for me, it's just not a one-day thing, you know? It's every day. Autism is something that, you know, there's, you know, there's no, nothing that can say, hey, you did this, this is how it came, and it's in all genders, nations, and whatnot. And so, I just really wanna continue to enhance awareness, and, you know, just to spread love, enjoy, have a good time, come out, you know, see some artwork. We're gonna. And then, after the meeting, we're doing what?
Then, take my baby to Chicago.
Loves to take his baby to Chicago. Stand up. Harmony has something to say, too. You ready? You want me to start? All right, everybody, so join us.
To Light It Up Blue?
Yes, join us to Light It Up Blue on April 2nd, again, at the Waukegan Public Library. I thank everybody for your time. I thank you for hearing us out. I hope that you all come. We also have, so, yeah, this is some of his artwork. There will be other children there as well who are on a spectrum, or persons who are on a spectrum, and if they have any artwork, you can absolutely get it to us by March 15th. We would like all artwork by March 15th so that we can display it at the public library. Again, we'll have food, we'll have drinks, we'll have some entertain, we'll have a speaker, and, yeah, and it's just gonna be a great time. I feel like I'm forgetting something. Yeah, just come out, everybody. Tell a friend. We have some, also, if you can't make it, we have a donation letter, you know, we have some baskets. If you wanna donate anything, that'll be great. Like I said, everything is going back into the Waukegan Public Library, and I'm just excited about this, and thank you for your support, Mayor Taylor and all the other Aldermen. I've been getting some really nice feedback, and again, I just thank you, you know? We're all in this together. So, Waukegan's strong.
I do have a lot of flyers that we will leave. Where would you like the flyers?
If you can put them on the table in the back, by the elevators there, and then people can get them on their way out.
Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Next, we're going to have a proclamation that Madam Clerk will read for March being Women's History Month in Waukegan.
I'll be delighted. Proclamation, March is Women's History Month in Waukegan, whereas Women's History Month is established to honor and celebrate women's contributions to history, culture, and society, and has been observed annually in March since 1987. And whereas this month highlights the accomplishments and the countless ways women of every race, class, and ethnic background have strengthened and contributed to the tapestry of Waukegan and the nation, and acknowledges the leadership and contributions of women in government, law, business, education, medicine, military service, the arts, and every other field. And whereas, the courage and sacrifice of women tells the story of history with accounts of pioneers, trailblazers, and groundbreaking women who enhance and enrich society while continuing to nurture the family, fueling the growth and success of tomorrow's leaders. Whereas, Waukegan has a long history of women in leadership, including mayor, city clerk, council members, city department directors, and leadership roles in the police and fire departments. And whereas, despite obstacles, women continue to march forward representing Waukegan in the United States Senate, Illinois State Senate, and Assembly, and make up the majority of members on the Waukegan Public School Board of Education and the Lake County Board. And whereas, while women have been and continue to be innovators and leaders, wage and opportunity gap still exists with women earning 84 cents for every dollar earned by a man, with women of color earning even less, and women spend more time performing unpaid household work, including child and elder care. And whereas, this month highlights the countless women who fought tirelessly and courageously for equality, justice, and opportunity in Waukegan and around the world, opening doors for subsequent generations of dreamers and doers. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and the members of the City Council do hereby proclaim March as Women's History Month in Waukegan and honor women's historical contributions to Waukegan and the country. Take action to reverse continued inequities, ensure gender equality for future generations of girls, and work to empower future generations of women, trailblazers, and visionaries. Adopted the sixth day of March 2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As we're getting ready for audience time, do you have the sheet? Okay. I just wanna make sure that everybody knows, at our March 20th meeting, we will have Chief Navarro talk a little bit about crime in our city, and then we're going to have the fire department also talk about the increase in drugs, and particularly fentanyl. So, those will be discussed at our March 20th during this time period. You ready, Madam Clerk?
I am ready. Okay. I'm going to read off the first five names. Go ahead and go to the west side of the room today, and line up and be ready for your time. State your name. Rabbi Michael Ben Yosef, Rayon Edwards, David Dalison, Dean Laguera, and Colleen Hens. That's Rabbi Michael Ben Yosef, Rayon Edwards, David Dalison, Dean Linguahua, and Colleen Hens. As soon as you're ready, sir, I'll start the timer.
Greetings to the mayor, city council, the residents of Waukegan. My name is Rabbi Michael Ben Yosef, founder of Chicago Activist Coalition for Justice. I'm here to speak and advocate for the life of Marcella Stennett, who was murdered in cold blood by former Waukegan police officer Dante Solinas. Mayor Taylor, just like Mayor Lightfoot in Chicago is out of a job, I believe you are next to be voted out. Will there be a comment tonight about with regards to the raid that happened in this city? Government, federal government came to raid your city, even also Alderman Kirkwood is under investigation. Will there be a comment tonight? Today, as this is women's appreciation, women's advocacy, today is Jews around the world is observing the festival of Purim. Purim is celebrated because the Jews were facing total genocide by the Persian Empire, while Jews were in exile. The reason why this was to plot to destroy the Jews was being, because of evil instigator that hated the Jews for who they were and what they believed. His name was the wicked, his name was called the wicked Haman. Long story short, Queen Esther was a Jew, but he heard her identity but was concerned her people would be killed. She organized a protest and went, and went to the Persian people, the Persian king, Hassris, and ultimately was able to convince the king that the wicked Haman was no good, and she revealed that her true identity as a Jew. The decree was to destroy the Jews, but was avoided. The story of Purim reminds me of Waukegan. The wicked Haman is the former police officer Dante Solinas, who devalues humanity, that murdered Marcellus and carried out genocide. The wicked Haman has followers. The city council was complacent, just like the people who supported with Haman was complacent. Queen Esther went before the righteous king to convince him to know the decree to kill the Jews. Mayor Taylor, you are totally opposite of King Hassris, because you are not righteous, you are not humble, you definitely are opportunists to win the blood, your seat, the blood of Marcellus, to pretend you cared. You protect cops like Dante Solinas, who murdered Marcellus, you never called for independent investigation. You knew that Officer Keaton harassed Marcellus' uncle while in the hospital. All in all, may justice come swiftly for Stennett's family, and may people be comforted, be blessed by the Almighty One. All lives don't matter until black lives matter. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rabbi.
Good evening, city council, community. Once again, I come up here in disappointment that we'd liked a lot of you guys to be leaders of this community. Every year during election year, you know, a lot of signs go up. I was real disgusted this time that we're out around, and so many racist signs is being put out, and I'm just wanna know from my politicians, the leaders of this city, when is we gonna start speaking of that? Our kids see that every time they go down the streets, the signs up like that, and ain't nobody saying anything. I'm still not seeing the city doing anything for the future. When I, and when I talk about the future, I'm simply saying to kids. Tonight, we were supposed to hear from Waukegan Public Schools, right? About the wraparound center, they were supposed to give a presentation of some kind because they had a deadline. It was urgency, is what they said, but as we sit here tonight, we see none of them in the audience. And again, I want y'all to consider this wraparound center, since everybody know what's needed in this community. I implore you Aldermen to get out more in your war, talk to your people. If you talk to them, they're gonna tell you that they don't need it, they not gonna come downtown for it. So, what are we voting for? It's another way to funnel money, to put money somewhere else, and we still got kids dying all around. They still dying, y'all. I don't know if y'all noticed it, but it's happening. They still have nowhere to go. There's not a community center nowhere in this city. And so, I wanted to just tell y'all, when everything calls for them, everywhere they go, it's a fee. I just wanted to remind y'all what's free. The streets is free. There's no charge to go there, and if you don't give them somewhere to go, that's where they're gonna go. So, over the weekend, we had an incident that happened downtown. I have to say this publicly, 'cause I'm proud of Mr. Smith, Mr. Carlos, 'cause he did the right thing, and it's something that I've been asking a lot of business on to do for the last two or three years, call the police on these animals that like to come in these establishments and show out. So, now, Chief Navarro, that was done, sir. I need some action, 'cause I'm sick of it, and I want all y'all to understand something. When y'all get on these microphones and y'all say to this community, if you see something, say something, make sure you say to them that you can protect them when they say something, 'cause I don't think y'all fully gets it. The police's job is to stop the immediate threat. That's it. That's all they do. Then, everything else go across the street, and you cannot guarantee those people that you are saying to them, if you see something, say something. You cannot guarantee that if they say something, they gonna be okay. Think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Dave Dalison.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me talk tonight. I live at Ridgeland County, and I have a rental property around the corner on 310 County, sorry, 918 County. And last Thursday, I just got back to my house in the evening, and I heard five gunshots, six gunshots, very loud, very close. I thought they were right in front of my house. I have a seven-year-old, a 13-year-old, and it turns out, the gunfire was actually at the house that I own, and the bullets, five of them, went right through the living room. My tenants were sitting in the room, four of them fabulous people, watching TV. They're ex-militaries, they knew to dive on the ground, and luckily, none of them hit them, but what's going on, right? This is crazy. It's, we're so used to hearing about shots and guns and such that we've almost become numb to it, but when it hits that close to home, you just have to say something. So, that's why I'm here to just make sure that you guys are aware of this. One of my tenants in that house works at the hospital in town, and he works in the emergency room, and he has the trust of one of the officers that he sees there quite often, and that officer said, you know, I can almost guarantee that there's a, there's a house on County Street that has a lot of gang activity, and there's a grudge going on between them and the towers, and that's probably what that was. It was two young kids having a shootout, and my house was in the background with these, you know, my tenants in there. So, you're asking for tips, you know? There's a tip. What do we do about this stuff? I don't know what to, I don't know what to do about it. You know, Keith is my Alderman. He's great. I love Keith. I've been asking for years for speed bumps, stop signs, and I always get, well, we have to do studies, or the plows can't handle them. Nothing ever happens, so people speed down our road all the time. There's just things that you go, you know, what can we actually do to make these things happen? I don't know. I feel like I have my hands tied behind my back, but I just feel like I at least need to come out and say something. Three years ago, that same building had a bullet come through the back, up into my tenant's bedroom. Same group, I mean, these tenants are fabulous, they haven't left, but I gotta tell you, having bullets come into the living room is making them seriously consider leaving this town, and they're, they all have great jobs, they have great incomes, they could live elsewhere. They like Waukegan. I like Waukegan. I'm raising my kids here. I don't wanna leave this town, but, boy, I gotta say, it's very unnerving. So, I know a lot of you guys, and I'm thankful for the effort you guys all put into this, and, you know, collectively, we have to do something, but give me some idea, you know? Give me some hope. The tower just seems to be a festering spot right now. They just, I just, all I hear is bad things about it. I know you're trying to do things about it, and it's not easy, but something's gotta be done. Anyway, that's what I've got to say. I have some other wonderful neighbors of mine here who are gonna speak their piece.
Thank you, David. Mr. Dean? Let me get this going.
Hi, I'm Dean Lungenhan. I've lived in 200 block on Ridgeland, the 6th Ward, for 13 years we own a home. We also manage another home just down the street, and we moved here specifically because we love Waukegan. My wife and I are not from Waukegan, I'm from Wisconsin, she's from Tucson. We chose Waukegan. For some reason, we felt drawn to it. On March 2nd, Dave said, there were shots fired just outside of our house. The weekend before, I know that there were shots fired in Upton Park on both Saturday and Sunday, 'cause I know people that live right by Upton Park. Two years ago, we had shots fired also just outside of our house, and we've had problems with drug dealings happening just across our street for weeks at one point that the police knew about, but nothing was done. And every time we bring it up, we're told it's an isolated incident. Thing is, it was always. Thing is, it was always isolated, incident after isolated incident becomes a pattern. And I note very specifically that there's been an increase in violence in, especially among youth in Waukegan. So what do we want? First, we would like increased patrols and police presence, both in neighborhood and specifically the park, very specifically Upton Park, by the police. Not just depending on the park district's security, who can really just look for things, but can't do much. Also, we would like police cameras in Upton Park to help prevent gang activity, because there's so, it's such a prime place for gang activity, because there's so many directions you can go. A camera would hopefully help decrease that. Third, we'd like better communication, both from the police and from the city and our aldermen. Not just initial reaction to the violence, but then also what's happening after the fact, to help prevent and catch the culprits. And also how the community can help, and it should include our mayor and the police. And finally, I think we should have a youth outreach center or program that gives the youth a place to go as an alternative to gang activities. It gets the community involved in the youth in our city. It also helps support the parents who can't be with their kids all the time, particularly teenagers who are maybe working and are just trying to keep ends meet. And finally, it helps the youth feel connected to the community, as opposed to being apart from the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Colleen Hints.
Hi, my name is Colleen Hints. I've been a resident of the 200 block of Ridgeland Avenue in the sixth ward for over fifteen years. My husband Nathan is not here, because he's done. He is done with the gunfire, he's done with the violence, and with trying to help a city that isn't as invested in itself as its own residents. His absence tonight should speak volumes. We are active Waukeganites, serving on committees, nonprofits, boards, and foundations. We have repeatedly invested in the city with our time, money, energy, and raising our family here. We have defended the city time and dime again, saying that it gets a bad rap, and we live in a wonderful, safe place. However, for the second time in three years, we are now seriously contemplating having to leave our home, our neighborhood, and the city because of gang-related gunfire in our neighborhood. We can no longer say in good conscience that we live in a safe neighborhood, and we can no longer defend the city in terms of safety and violence. A few years ago, gang members exchanged gunfire while in moving cars as they tore down our street. Most of the gunfire happened in front of my home and in an adjacent intersection. My son's bedroom is in the front of our house. My husband and I tore up our stairs, deathly afraid that stray bullets had gone through my son's bedroom walls and windows. I cannot even begin to tell you the feeling in the pit of my stomach and the sheer terror of those moments, they are unforgettable. I stared in horror minutes later, as shell casings were tagged, photographed, bagged, and picked up from the parkway, and the street, and the sidewalk, and the driveway in front of my house. This was my home, this was my house, it hit too close. We stayed because it was the first time anything like that had happened. Then this past Thursday evening, gunfire again erupted in our neighborhood. I told my kids to stay put, and as I ran into the front of my house calling 911, I saw a suspect run through my neighbor's yard. We found that out later, that multiple bullets had gone through a different neighbor's living room wall, barely missing them. Again, we were told that it was an isolated gang-related incident. However, there have been other multiple isolated random gang or gun-related incidents the past few years. It's becoming more frequent, more violent, more concerning. These are no longer isolated, it's becoming a worrying pattern. After the last incident, as you can see, our neighborhood responded. We called the police, one another, our aldermen, and engaged other residents. I commend the police department for a large and prompt response. However, after that, there's been a lack of communication and engagement on the city level. No detectives knocking on doors, no communication from our neighborhood unit officer or city staff. I ask for a more highly visible and continued presence of police in the area, the city's crime reports website functioning. I ask for the chief of police, our neighborhood police unit officer, alderman and mayor to have a meeting with us, to update us, to give us a holistic view of the crime in the area, and to inform us of what else we can do. We need better communication and collaboration. We need you to be as invested in the safety of our neighborhood as we are. We are a neighborhood that is not okay.
Thank you, Ms. Colleen, thank you.
My four and nine-year-olds' knife are not acceptable collateral.
The next group will be Jack Die, Samira Charity, Jose Medrano, Carlos Smith, Clyde McLamore, and Margaret Carrasco. Jack Die, Samira Charity, Jose Medrano, Carlos Smith, Clyde McLamore, and Margaret Carrasco. Anytime you're ready, Jack.
Jack Die, I've had some neighbors here speaking about the shooting that happened over at the 900 block, whatever it was of County. That's a pitching wedge away from my front steps. Upton Park is literally inches from my backyard. We have gunshots shooting around where my, within my dogs, my child, my wife, my neighbors. Citizens, we're, we're, pardon my French, we're pissed. We don't get word from stuff. We, we live in a city where I have neighbors coming up to me. They know I know a lot of people, and they're saying, hey, I got this notice of violation because my paint's peeling on my windowsill, I gotta put gutters up, I'm gonna get a fine. We get bullets ringing in someone's living room, and we don't hear anything. I was fortunately not home, I was out, and I, but I could see it from my security cameras in front of my house, hey, there's cop cars there. So I talked to my neighbors, I heard some things, we've had conversations. But as a citizen, as a resident, I'm just, as a resident, I'm just looking for something to make me feel safe. As Colleen said, to make my family safe. Gun violence, we understand it's prevalent everywhere. I'm an alumni of Michigan State University, we're all aware of what happened at Michigan State University, senseless. Michigan State's not a perfect place. They're trying to do their best to prevent anything like that happening again. And we hear from Waukegan residents in the first ward, the second, the third, the fourth, the fifth, the sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth. There's gun violence everywhere. We need to make it stop. I love the guys earlier, I didn't catch his name, the gentleman who mentioned something about community center. Give these kids something to do. And honestly, throw them in jail, I'm okay with that as well. I will do whatever it takes to keep my family safe, whether it means staying, whether it means leaving, whether it means if your cop car wants, if cops want to park in my driveway at 235 Gillette, roll the car in, park it there all day long, I'm okay with that. I'll bring you out some coffee, it's awesome. I just think that this community needs answers. I've talked a lot at City Council about financial issues, city issues, moving forward, a lot of things. Heck, I ran for office before. I'm a very involved human being. I don't always agree with you guys, I know you guys are trying your best. But when there's something like this, this is, this is the hill I quote-unquote die on. Make this city safe, or you won't have people here. We're all out. Your tax revenue that you get to do your projects and do your streets and do all this stuff, that, we all leave. There is nothing that is worth a human life. So we need some answers in the sixth ward and every ward, and we need to feel safe. It's cold outside, and we're getting gun violence, we're getting people running down the street popping off guns. This is not a city that anyone, how do I tell someone, hey, I live in Waukegan, that used to feel like an attack on me, now I'm just saying, yep, you're right. Just make that change, guys, thanks.
Thank you. Samira Charity.
Good evening, my name is Samira Charity, Director of the fabulous Elite Striders Drill Team and Drum Corps. I just want to let everyone know here that we're having a big fundraiser. It's called Drill or Die. It's a drill team, dance team, and drum corps competition. And, what else I want to say? And it's, actually, it's the weekend of May 19th, 20th, and 21st. And, yeah, that's what I want to say. Okay, so we do have a fundraiser going on, we do have the end of our chocolate fundraiser that we will have in the back if we can. We have flyers for the event. We also will be talking to someone in regards to having a parade, maybe that Friday, to welcome our visitors here. We do have host teams from around the country. So it's a really big event, and, yeah, that's what I want to say. The ti- it's, yes, it's May 19th, the, the competition is May 19th, we're trying to do a parade on the, the competition's on the 20th, we're trying to do the parade on the 19th here in Waukegan. Yeah, Tyrus from the hit show Bring It, from Lifetime, is going to host my show. And it's for the Elite Striders Drill Team and Drum Corps. We do have opportunity for sponsorship. It's at Zion Benton High School. And, yeah, it, it costs to get people like Tyrus to come, so we are looking for sponsorship. We host, the drill team does host children from Lake County, primarily Waukegan or Chicago and Zion participants. We have over sixty kids this season. We just signed up in January, we're continuing to take children, we took someone yesterday. This is a safe haven for our children. We talk about the youth not having a place to stay, but we don't, we are not housed yet. And it's, it's nine years in existence, but we're not housed. So that's another conversation, but we do have sixty kids in our program, maybe sixty-two. So this is gonna be a great year for us, Nationals is in Baltimore, Maryland, and we're the best, period.
Thank you. Jose Medrano, oh, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna work it out. Hold on, let me start your time. Okay, go ahead.
I'm just so used to grabbing the microphone like this, I'm sorry, this is what I do. So yes, Drill or Die is May 20th. Samira is the director, she does a wonderful job, we talk about violence, we talk about gun violence. Without the drill team, I would not be who I am today. If you know who I am, I did the drill team when I was a kid, right on the south side of, of, of Waukegan, at the, at the, the Y is what we used to call it. So definitely investing in this project. I want to sell those two boxes of chocolate tonight, I want to see if we can do that, I want to challenge that, that money goes straight to this national-ranked group. And when she says they're the best, they are the best. They go to the east coast, they go to the west coast, they go down south, and they win, they go win, straight up. So please, if we could, the, I think it's like fifty bucks for maybe both of those boxes. So I want to see if we can sell those out tonight with the help of the council and the mayor and everyone else here. If we could do that, that would be awesome. Also, it's a sponsorship levels, if any wants, anybody wants to be a part of that. The first level was five hundred dollars, the next level was a thousand, and then the big level was fifteen hundred. And you get a really good package, because over two thousand or three thousand people come to the show every year. She's got national television people that's gonna be there as well, so it's gonna be a dope and amazing event. To piggyback off of what Ray Ray said earlier, I did call the police, I do call the police. On Saturday night, we had an incident, so small. But Chief, if we could come up with some type of system where we log the names of the people that do stuff, because I'm with it, I'm with it, I ain't with the snitching, it's no snitching, I'm with snitching, I'm telling. So if you come in my space and you do something stupid, because I talked to some guys today, and they were really helpful, the police that I talked to today. But the infractions are really kind of minor on people who come into businesses and trying to fight or do anything. It's kind of like a, yeah, you know, but I really want to like, yo, you know, give them like a fine or something, I don't know. But yeah, so that, Drill or Die, definitely, we want you guys to support this and come out and show love. And, yeah, that's, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Jose Medrano.
Hello, my name is Jose Medrano. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Mayor Taylor, I'm, oops, sorry. I'm coming back to you regarding the water bill charges that has been written off by your amount, for an amount well over twenty-two thousand for, well, twenty-two thousand dollars for the address located at 200 and 202nd Green Bay Road, Waukegan, Illinois. I remind you, Mayor Taylor, the owners of this business did personally endorse you and physically supported you. Mayor, when, will, when will you tell the taxpayers of Waukegan, why did you have your campaign supporter, supporters' water bill written off by taxpayers of Waukegan? When there are other homeowners who need their help with water bills, but you allowed for the city water service to be disconnected? Mayor Taylor, you are such a hypocrite and now a liar. You have criticized the last two mayors for helping friends and family members with city jobs and access to them for favors, but you have hired your campaign manager, Brad Goodman, your campaign running mate, Maria LaCorre. You hired ex-seventh ward alderman Lisa May, who endorsed you and allowed you to have your campaign headquarters in her family commercial building. And now you promoting a city manager form of government reduce corruption? You are a joke, Mayor Taylor, and I hope the Lake County news media exposes you for lies and hypocrisy, just as all the news media has done to the politicians who lied to their constituents. Alderman, when will you hold the Mayor Taylor accountable for her lies and hypocrisy, just as you did with the last mayor? And if you don't hold Mayor Taylor accountable, then wonder why people don't actually vote. Thank you for listening, and have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Clyde McLamore.
I passed around a copy of the city ordinance residential requirement. It is highlighted with ordinances that have been established since January of 1978. I ask you, Mayor, and this administration, why the building commissioner haven't moved to Waukegan? He's supposed to move by one year of the date of his hire, according to the city ordinance. Once again, Mayor, you are underestimating the citizens of Waukegan by enforcing rules as if the citizens of Waukegan are your peasants. This administration want to fine and tax citizens for not following the rules, but you sitting there breaking the rules. Black lives matter is calling for the resignation and the fire or firing of the building commissioner due to he has not followed the contract agreement. Mayor, I was going over the budget that you, that you introduced tonight. For those who haven't seen it, here's our new budget. A hundred and nineteen thousand for the mayor pay. For the city manager, two hundred and fifty thousand. For the deputy senator, deputy city manager, a hundred and fifty-two thousand. That's a total of five, five hundred and twenty-one thousand and eight hundred dollars. First, I thought the casino was over at Fountain Square, I didn't know it was here at City Hall. Before you aldermen get out of here, vote this budget down. We cannot allow these people to come into Waukegan and put the city back in the red. The mayor has shown y'all, she doesn't respect the city or the citizens. She, Mayor Taylor, is so sure that this referendum is gonna pass, she already wrote the salaries into her budget for the city manager. All the new aldermen that's coming on, don't y'all see the trick? It's called voting at large voting. Which would hire, which would hinder black and brown people from being mayor or alderman? Please do your research. This last election, people did not show up, that's what she's counting on, us not voting. To the citizens of Waukegan, look at the change in the city of Waukegan. It is the only city in Lake County that you have to pay to park downtown. It's a hustle, but it's not the, this is not monopoly money, this is your tax dollars. This is not the mayor, this is a dictator.
Thank you, Mr. McLamore. Ms. Carrasco.
Good evening.
Hold on, whoa, trying to get this baby going. I'm ready.
Okay, yes, good evening. My words tonight will be in regards to Agenda Item 11A, the budget, the city budget, okay? I've been waiting for this opportunity, because this is appropriate, the information I have to share tonight. Because before you vote on a budget and look to see where you can make budget cuts in regards to services to residents, you need to do something first. You need to act upon an employee in the city who is abusing and stealing tax dollars. I received a packet in the mail that was, um, given to me on behalf of fifty Waukegan police officers that are sick and tired of this employee getting away with this. I felt that it was of poor importance to bring it out. Because if they themselves are reporting it, that should tell you enough. I'm not gonna say the name of the person right now. I would just refer to them as Employee K, okay? And the letter reads that, um, we are writing in hopes that someone cares enough to get rid of this police officer, their colleague, right, okay? Who has no integrity. And who has lied extensively in order to benefit financially, stealing from the taxpayers of Waukegan. There wasn't even an internal investigation, and the results of it proved that it was true. However, this police officer is still on the force. And has not been charged criminally. Just go on. I have a packet of evidence that they shared with me. And I would say, and you know, I get so much stuff from so many people, nothing like this. The letter goes on to say that, um, um, the K, remember, was not present and filed thousands of dollars for overtime. I believe my calculation in one year was close to a hundred thousand dollars. There's two issues here. How could one officer get so much overtime? Okay, I mean, there's only so many hours in a day, right? How can you be working full-time here and full-time there? And the second thing is that, that's a slam on all the other hard-working officers. Why didn't they not get a chance to work that overtime? Why is that one officer hogging all the money, hogging all the overtime? Anyhow, um, it go on, and it goes that, um, K, was not present for the hours that K submitted. Overtime slips, request for state grant traffic details. And K then went on, uh, for the entirety. There he even put a GPS tractor on the squad. And that didn't stop the person. They just kept on. So the GPS proved that this person was not working here. We just heard about all the crime going on in Waukegan. I'll be done. We need every single cop on the street of Waukegan and not working overtime in Naperville. So according to this letter, the GPS proved that this police officer had a assigned take-home vehicle to earn money for details. But instead, K worked outside the city of Waukegan and did not have permission, liability issue, to take the squad home and let alone work another job in Naperville when she was supposed to have been here, working for us. Wow, I don't even know where. So this K is still employed, still collecting money, has not been terminated, has not been committed of theft for falsifying records, has, has not been required to pay us back the money, taxpayers, that she did not work the time. This person has been not charged criminally. The person has, K has not been decertified as a police officer in the state of Illinois.
Thank you, Ms. Margaret.
I will be filing criminal charges against her, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Mayor, that concludes, okay.
Um, I'm going to have corporate counsel make a couple of announcements before we go on.
There was some comments about criminal activity that was associated with the tower. I assume that that's in reference to Two Hundred Julian. Is that, yeah. Um, we got some news that the, a new purchaser, um, has actually come to terms with price. And that the date for closing has been extended to Friday. We expect this was a court-ordered sale that required the operator of that property to sell the, um, to sell the tower or face a receivership, which would have basically taken control away. We are encouraged, we think that this purchaser is actually a good operator, someone who can actually take control of that property, monitor it, and make it a safe place, not only for the people who live there, safe and habitable place, but also to improve the quality of life for the people who live around it. I don't think that addresses every concern that was, um, voiced today, but I at least wanted to give that piece of information. There was a question about the, I think, about the impact of, uh, the referendum with regard to changing the form of government. I had talked with the alderman about this, that, uh, there will be an ordinance, that will be discussed at the next meeting, which will, um, if the alderman decide to approve it, would put on the, um, national primary, um, in March of twenty twenty-four, which is the soonest, 'cause you, um, that's the next, that's the next actual election that everybody votes. To put, if the managerial referendum is approved, that this would go on the next available election to maintain the nine wards and one alderman from each ward.
Thank you.
So that would be, um, something that the alderman would have a chance to vote on.
Hey Stuart, I was gonna mention that, uh, Julian Tower, I, I've asked twice now for special police detail down there. Has you got, any, you guys considering that? What's, what's up with the detail? I think we need police down here, like we did in two thousand and five.
They have their own security, and then we do our own, like, we have, that I would ask Chief Navarro, 'cause I don't wanna discuss details of what we're doing.
All right.
Um, because that kind of destroys the security.
I know they have security down here. When I'm, I wanna reiterate, we need police there. We did it in two thousand and four or five, and we shut down all criminal activity. I don't know why they went away, but anyway.
Police are there.
Thanks, I'll talk more about that. You guys stick around, please, 'cause I'm gonna talk about this at, uh, alderman's time.
Again, I just wanna make sure that people understand that, um, because of the way that it was voted, when some of the aldermen denied having the city manager, they denied the other two as well. So we will go back and correct that. And that will be done, as we said, it has to be within less than a year. So that means that we will have our next city council meeting on the twentieth. The next election next year for the primary is March nineteenth. So that is under a year. That's three hundred and sixty-four days before, and we can do it. And then it would go, um, on the ballot for the next time. At this point, that's the, the, the next step to go. I am looking into other legislative matters to see if it could be done also another way, but that would be the most likely way that we would do it. The current aldermen that have either been elected already through the primary or going, um, on April fourth, have four-year terms. So it would not change anything until twenty twenty, or twenty twenty-seven. But like I said, the referendum would be there before that, um, to counteract that. Moving on to consent agenda. I'd like to see if anybody would be willing to, um, move new business up to the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so I have, um, a first by Alderman Turner, a second by Alderman Florian. And this just requires a voice consent.
Yeah, so just, this would be establishing the consent agenda by adding all item, on, on, all items under new business, A, B, C, D, and E, um, which have all been previously heard in committee, up to the consent agenda, so there would be a single vote.
All those in favor to move the old, or, I'm sorry, the new business up under the consent agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now can I have a motion, um, to he, uh, for the consent agenda, to hear the consent agenda? I need a first.
So moved.
Second.
Newsom, um, Alderman Florian was the second. Okay. Um, I, or, I'm sorry, um, I need a, oh, I've got a first and second, we're fine. Um, item A, a motion to approve the regular minute, or meeting minutes from Tuesday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Um, item B, motion to approve regular payroll dated February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three in a total amount of one million, seven hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. Item C, a motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, paid holiday payback, and comp time cash-out retro pay dated February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three in a total amount of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and fourteen cents. Item D, a motion to approve vendor payments dated March sixth, twenty twenty-three in a total amount of one million, nine hundred and thou, nine hundred and one thousand and three dollars and sixty-four cents. Item A, under new business, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to approve a resolution for a change order number three with air con refrigerator, refrigeration and heating for an amount of eighteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. This matter was presented at the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee meeting on March sixth, twenty twenty-three. Item B, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to approve a resolution for spending authority in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars per Section two dash four five eight dash I seven, a good faith waiver with water products and Aurora for amount, and not to exceed amount of fifty thousand dollars. This matter was presented at the Public Works Infrastructure Committee meeting on March sixth, twenty twenty-three. Item C, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to approve a resolution for QBC policy for when the city receives federal funds for consultant engineering services. This matter was presented at the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee meeting on March sixth, twenty twenty-three. Item D, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to enter into a contract with Office Plus for the purchase of office furniture for public works and engineering per Section two dash four five eight I three, joint purchasing for not to exceed amount of fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-one cents. This matter was presented at the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee meeting on March sixth, twenty twenty-three. Item E, a zoning calendar, number twenty-six ninety-six, an amendment to the twenty-twenty Comprehensive Land Use Plan, incorporating a, a list of reference and supplemental plans that support and amend the twenty-twenty plan. This matter was presented at the Community Development Meeting on March sixth, twenty twenty-three. Any questions to any of the motions? Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. There being no or, ordinances, um, closing time would be Alderman time?
Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I got a lot I wanna talk about tonight, and I'm glad I'm going first. So firstly, I wanna address the shooting that occurred in nine hundred block of, uh, North County. And to my neighbors, I'm really happy to see you guys out here. And to my colleagues, now that you've heard from some of the citizens, maybe you, uh, can appreciate the level of concern that is felt throughout the city. These four folks that just came in here and spoke about this, Jack, Dean, Colleen, and David. You know, I talk with these, I haven't talked to Jack and, and Dean about this particular incident, but I talk to my neighbors, and, and over there. Yes, ma'am, of course. So I just wanna, I wanna thank you guys for coming forward, all right? And, um, so I became aware of this about two hours after the fact. And here's, here's what I wanna say, and I tell all my neighbors the same thing. If there's an emergency, call the police, then call me. And when I say call me, that's what I mean, call, because I got eight texts, but I was asleep. I get up at two and three o'clock in the morning, so I was asleep at seven-thirty. And I got eight texts, but I got a phone call from someone else who lived down by Frank, like, behind Cribs and at nine-thirty, or nine o'clock, and that's how I found out. And then I checked my texts, so please, call me, all right? Now, so being aware of it, I came over there immediately. I spoke to the victims, or potential victims that, in the house that was shot. I spoke with David and some of the other neighbors in the immediate vicinity on that block. After the fact, I immediately reached out to my park district commissioner, Janet Kilkelly. And I reached out to the executive director of the park district to try and figure out what we can do to better secure Upton Park. And I will be meeting together, face-to-face, with the director and their security team on Thursday to go through a walk-through in Upton Park, all right? Also went over there and looked in that ravine behind your house, Jack, I know it's a problem. I've been there, I, three times last summer, I, either I or the park district went down there, cleaned up the drug paraphernalia, the booze and beer bottles and the trash. Now, there was no evidence of recent activity down there, because it's been wet and muddy, right? So there's no tracks down there. So this incident, and it did start, we know it started, in Upton Park with some kind of verbal altercation, went out onto the street in North, that, North County, down a block, or up a block, and then there were at least two shooters involved, right? So I just wanna assure you that I'm aware, I'm taking what action I can. The police, obviously, it's an open investigation. David, you mentioned the other house in the eight hundred block, we know about that. Again, we can't talk about active investigations, and we're not gonna make any allegations, right? So, but I'm on it. I also wanna encourage you guys again, and I can't say it enough, please keep me informed of what's going on in the neighborhood. You don't know how many conversations I have, not just with the chief, but with the deputy chiefs and with the officers on the street, including our neighborhood police officer, including our gang intel guys. I'm talking to them directly, so keep me informed. And I really feel for you, because I get shots over there. Go ahead, David, I'll give you something, go ahead. I'm not, I'm not gonna speak to that, David, I'm not.
Cause two years ago, you said it was under investigation, I never heard anything said, so it seems like in a given amount of time, it's under investigation.
I understand, but I'm not gonna speak on it.
We can't do an exchange on this, but anytime that you're willing, we can set you up with Chief Navarro to talk about that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Speak up, Colleen.
But we'll set that up, but we just can't do an exchange up here.
Yeah, thank you. All right. You can call me, call the phone right now, call it, call it. Well, shut up then, let me talk.
Guys, this is his time.
Okay, what do you want me to do? Tell me, I'll go do it right now. You want me to arrest someone? I don't have police powers. You know who to arrest? Call, call me and give it up. I, I got my six war rewards program that is active throughout the city all year long. Give you five thousand cash dollars, it's in my safe. I'll give you five thousand cash dollars right now, you give me information, me and the chief. You give us information leading to, to the arresting conviction of someone in possession of illegal firearm that did that shooting. I'll give you five thousand dollars of my money, not tax dollars. So you keep your mouth shut, you don't know what you're talking about. And if you wanna talk to me, you call me. You can call me anytime.
Guys.
Thank you for your attention tonight.
It's his time, there's not an exchange.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, um, and Dean, you did mention the speed bumps, man, I've been working on it for twenty years. I get those, I just share with you the excuses that I get, I'm, I haven't given up, I'm gonna get some speed bumps eventually. Tomorrow, I am gonna host a town hall via Zoom and on, uh, Facebook Live regards to the city manager. Conundrum, because there's a lot of misinformation and, and it's just wrong, what's being bandied about. Clyde, you mentioned something and you're wrong, and I know you got, you got the wrong information, but that's what's happening. Somebody's putting out the wrong information, and it's being promulgated throughout the city. I'm gonna clear that up tomorrow, all right? I'm, I'm gonna speak to it, and I will not, I cannot by law speak in favor of or against this referendum. I don't have a position on it, I'm just gonna give you the facts, okay? Guys don't like it when I talk straight, but that's all I do. That'll be tomorrow, six-thirty, six-thirty PM. The information is on Facebook, it's on Nextdoor. If you're on my email list, you got a, got a blast email, I may send out a text, so. It'll, it'll be out there on, uh, you know, on Facebook Live, so you can see it after. It'll, it'll be out there on, you know, on Facebook Live, so you can see it after the fact, okay? And if you want, Clyde, you got my number, everybody's got my number, call me, all right? And I'll, I'll give it to you one-on-one. All right, thank you. Next, I want to say on the City Manager and the Deputy City Manager being, the pay and the position being included in the budget, I don't think that's right. It hasn't been passed yet, and we shouldn't be budgeting for something that doesn't exist, okay? Thank you very much. Next, I want to mention that we are having Earth Week cleanup. The dumpsters will be out, I'll give a date in April when they'll be out in the Sixth Ward, and it will be up under the power lines under Walnut Street, 1700 block of Walnut. Hey, Chris, do you have that date handy for the Sixth Ward? It's okay, I'll get that out there. All right, and then last but not least, the Walkegan Police and Fire Memorial Fund is having a fundraiser on St. Friday, March 17th, the St. Patrick's Day, it's going to be at the Field Room out in Libertyville, 481 Peterson Road, doors open at 7:30. The Breakfast Club is going to be performing live with DJ Crank and some other stuff. All these monies, whatever monies are raised, go directly into a memorial fund for the surviving families of officers or police or firefighters who have passed on, right? So they do some really great work in providing for those families, the surviving children particularly, right? And that's it, and that's all. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Alderman Florian.
Ooh, that's a tough act to follow.
Stand by, I got to do it, you know.
So Earth Week is coming up, as Alderman Turner mentioned. I believe it's the week of the 17th of April that we're doing the dumpsters, and yours would be on the 19th.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mine will be on the 20th. So we are using the same locations we used a year ago. If any of you have problems with your location that you had last time, please let us know so we can change it, let Chris know, and he can get his team on it if you want it in a different place, we can do that. We're looking for any volunteers that are willing to help that week. We're wanting to do cleanups throughout the city. Last year, we did the Amstutz, the Beach and the Harbor with some help. We could do more of the city. We've got some of the churches involved, we're hoping to get the schools involved. If every church did their block and every school did their block, we could cover a lot of the city. And the idea Alderman Rivera and I have worked on with some other people in the community, oh, excuse me, Marty Wozniak, Jane Ferry, Shar Wozniak, what we'd like to do is get the kids involved because they can then put pressure on their parents of, you know, when they notice them littering, like, hey, why'd you do that? Somebody has to pick that up. Litter doesn't just disappear magically, somebody has to pick it up. And I believe one of the, one of the ways that the non-smoking campaign got rolling was kids put pressure on their parents to stop smoking, so that's why we think this idea of getting kids involved in picking up litter may eventually get people to stop littering. So, Earth Week, please, please volunteer, please join us. We presented a very short presentation today on the budget, Mr. Schultz did, and we will be voting on that in two weeks, so there will be a lot of discussion between now and then amongst us, with the Finance Director, and then, of course, on the 20th, the people can come with any questions they have about exactly what's in the budget and what's happening with our, our planning. Again, a budget, we talked about this last year, is an outline, it's a plan of how the year is going to go. I want to thank the people from the Sixth Ward that came out tonight to discuss this incident that happened in their neighborhood. I know it must be awful, I know some of you personally, and my heart breaks for your, the stress this has created for you and your families. As you all know, we talk about it up here a lot, crime is a problem throughout the whole city. I don't have all the answers, I probably don't have any of the answers, but I do believe...
You're going to have to leave if you don't understand. This is Alderman time. Audience time was when you had the opportunity to speak. If you can't contain yourself, then you must leave because you've been told a number of times now, so it might be best if you just leave.
That's okay, thank you, Mayor. So one of the things I, I agree with that was mentioned tonight is, is some kind of youth center, some kind of youth initiative. We need to do something to help the kids in our community have alternatives to the streets. As Ray Edwards said, the streets are free, and, and we see the consequences of that. I think we need to try to band together as a community and address this through the schools, the nonprofits, us as a city council, and come up with some kind of alternatives for the youth to engage in. I also believe that research shows communities like ours with large income inequality, I've talked about this before, have more crime. It's just a fact. You look at a place like Lake Forest or Lake Bluff, they don't have to steal from each other or beat each other up, or they're, they're all about the same level of wealth, of income. If we can do something to address income inequality in our community, I think we would see crime come down. Let's give people job training, let's help them with housing, let's help them with finding a job, whatever it takes to get people raised up so that we're all better off as a result of that. So I know I'm a broken record when it comes to this because I say it a lot, but thank you and have a good night.
Alderman Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, a couple items. First of all, to the police chief and members of the police force, I would just ask for some enhanced enforcement along Belvedere Road. It is, I took Belvedere down, I turned off a river road heading to City Council tonight. It is difficult to make that right-hand turn to head east. It is even more difficult to turn left and head west. It is a treacherous intersection, it is unsafe, it is not well-lit, it is confusing, and it is very difficult to get up to speed in heavy traffic if you're making a turn to continue east or west. Many cars can't even fit in the middle of that intersection. So I would ask maybe work in cooperation with Gurney, I've seen Gurney officers out there, but it is one of the number-one complaints from residents in the Ninth Ward is that that intersection, especially those that live off River Road, is unsafe. There was a horrific fatality, as all fatalities are there last year. I have reached out to IDOT, I have talked to City Resources. A permanent fix is a long way off, but a temporary fix that I think would be really beneficial is just enhanced enforcement, maybe it's radar signs out there, but I would ask that that be addressed and that it be addressed soon. I think, staying on the topic of the police, I think the tip line is terrific. To members of the community, the police, they're trying to give you the resources to help. So many members of the public, they step up and they say, "The police aren't doing enough, the police aren't doing enough." But we also hear from different outlets that quite often, it's the people that are on that block or the people that live in the same apartment complex that have the information needed to solve a crime or provide evidence or at least be some sort of conduit between the wrongdoer and kind of what took place there. Inevitably, you need evidence, you need eyewitnesses, and those are the people that can help. And we also have heard, I don't have personal experience with this, so I'm not going to pretend to, but there are repercussions for people that tell on their neighbors or people in their neighborhood. This anonymous tip line is a resource that the police are giving you. Enroll, try it out, come back to City Council and tell us it doesn't work or how it can be improved, but give it a shot. Don't just dump on it before you've even, you've even tried it. So I would just encourage everyone to try it. I think it's a terrific effort by the police to engage the community. And lastly, I want to make a comment about the City Manager, the Mayor, and the salaries, the cumulative financial impact of, of having a Mayor and a City Manager. It's a terrific punchline. It sells great, and I can see without additional information how it could be persuasive. Oh, a half a million dollars, and people just feel like you got your hands in their pockets. That's not the case. We heard tonight a presentation about how this Mayor has cut costs, increased revenue, and now presented what I think is the third balanced budget. The Mayor's salary, did I hear, $119,000 is a rounding error compared to what has been saved. This is not at the expense of the Fire Department, it's not at the expense of the Police Department. Officers are being hired aggressively for police and fire. It's not enough, we're going to try to do more. Resources are being provided for police and fire. It is important that the residents understand that we are investing in city resources. The vast majority of the revenue that is collected by the city goes to the payroll of city employees. The city employees are the most important resource after the members of the community that we have. We have to invest in them. The Mayor's salary, if you're an investor, if you're looking at, you're looking for a return on investment, the Mayor's salary was an incredible investment by the residents of Walkegan because we are paying down debt. We are investing in the police, we are investing in the fire, we are investing money back into infrastructure improvements throughout the city, improvements that have been lacking for generations. Clear, strong, unwavering guidance has been lacking in that chair for a very long time. This Mayor is providing that. So the Mayor's salary, yeah, it's $119,000. That money is well-spent. A City Manager, that is an investment in the future. And so the salary was addressed tonight about the City Manager, so I want to address it. That, again, is an investment in the city. That City Manager will aggressively pursue grants and funding for the city so that the city can get its share of federal, state funding to continue with these improvements that are going to be made throughout the city and hopefully be made into the future. So I would encourage everybody to not bite on the punchline. Take a closer look. You don't have to dive too far down to figure out exactly what's going on and how the city would benefit. So salary was brought up, I want to address it, I think it's important, and that's all I have.
Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I thank you for your comments on this evening, and don't forget to vote on April 4th. And I know the Mayor has stepped out, but I, Attorney, maybe we can answer that comment and give some clarification to how the water bill was paid off? 202...
It wasn't.
2 North Green Bay Road.
It wasn't, it was not forgiven. That's just incorrect.
It was forgiven?
It was not. It was incorrect. What happened was that there was one bill for one address that included the entirety of the Ramada Inn and the business that's located there, and what happened was is that a separate water service was installed for the actual, for the bar. The bar pays its water bill. The Ramada Inn, which has been in litigation for a very long time and was under foreclosure, that has a separate water bill, and that has not been forgiven either.
Thank you so much.
We're not doing back and forth right now, but I, but I'll be happy to talk to you afterwards.
Okay, and for anyone else that might want clarification on that. And don't forget to purchase your city sticker. And then addressing the issue of violence, I definitely am a survivor of experiencing violence, and I find it really effective when we have our, it's not the only answer now, when we come together and have our block meetings, especially when you have a block captain, because that gives you opportunity to have a voice and be proactive. So it's just a thought of consideration. And then secondly, don't forget you have a community police officer assigned to your ward, so that might be something that, I know with my community officer, I communicate with him, he communicates with me, as well as my constituents. So adding all those elements in there, as well as you all being more proactive, adding in and communicating with us as Alderman, as well as you're a policeman, add all those elements in, and maybe, you know, you might be working towards and forward to an answer. It's not the only answer, but just putting thought to it, okay? As well as considering what my peers had suggested also. And thank you for everything, that's all I have for now. And don't forget to support your community events that were announced. Thank you.
Alderman Seager.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I want to take this time to thank everybody for coming down to the council meetings. Would you say negative or positive? We hear you. We definitely hear you, so I urge you, keep coming down. I've said that all along, for eight years. Your opinion does count. I'd also take, take time out to wish my condolences for the 10th family from the Second Ward. That's about it, and God bless you, stay, stay safe, and good night.
Alderman Mozio.
Crime, crime, crime. I've spoken about it many times up here, it's not an easy issue. I feel for you people. I don't know what it was, a couple years, a year ago, whatever, I said the only thing that deters crime and violence is police present, presence. I approached this at my house for four hours.
Yeah?
Defund the police. Now that seems to have flipped around. Every politician in America is running on, "We need more police." I said it, I don't know how long ago, we all get the significant incident reports up here. We see what happens. And I, and I feel for you people. It's all over. I've said this all the time, North Chicago, Walkegan, Zion, Kenosha, Pleasant Prairie, it's just one big metropolitan area, crime is mobile. Every nitwit fool idiot's got a gun in a car, and all they do is ride around and have havoc. So it's very difficult, the days of standing on a street corner, those days are over. Now, are there houses that are targeted? Absolutely, that's what it sounds like happened in this neighborhood, that happens all the time. And obviously, the police do as good a job as they can with that. Chief Navarro, in 2003, were you on the force in 2003? When'd you come on the force, chief? How many officers do we have? 170-something?
172.
What do we got now?
60.
It's light.
Well, we were 138 a few months ago.
Do the math on. So now I'll probably have people at my house again. This time, bring your ass out this time. I'll have something for you. All right? Not that I was right, I knew I was right then. That's the only thing that deters crime, is police present. And I'm not talking about Gestapo tactics, but if bad people know that there's a policeman around the corner, they're less, less, less likely to act up. Let me get to that, Clyde. There's been a lot of talk about stuff for youth. We'll go to Chicago in a little bit there, young fellow, hold on. I've been teaching for 34 years, and anybody that's taught or coached, we had a saying, idle time is the devil's playground. Have to give this youth something to do after school. And the school now, compared to when I first started, has more stuff for these kids to do than ever before. And it, I have to contradict my friend Ray Ray, most of it's free. Most of it is free, most of it does not cost. I'll give District 60 a pat on the back, and I don't do that very often, even though they're my bosses, they have lowered the cost for kids to participate in activities after school at all levels. There's an after-school program that is free, zero, almost at, almost at every school.
Don't forget the Park District.
There are, there are, there are things out there. But how do we get them engaged? That's, that's the problem. The other problem, and I hate to go on and on, but I'm not going to be up here too much longer. I've said it before, Superintendent Chicago has said it, we can only arrest the same people so many times. Alderman Turner brought it up. After we arrest somebody, after the police arrest them, what happens?
Nothing.
What, it's out of our hands up here and it's out of our police hands. It goes across the street. Maybe we needed to all start going over there and asking them questions. And like you said, Clyde... And like you said, Clyde, these young people know. They know they're not gonna get charged, they know it. They know they're not gonna get charged. I talked to them, they know. They know there are no consequences.
None.
They know it. What do you do? What's the answer? I've been trying to think of it for 34 years. It's gotten worse. What is the answer? When they, human nature knows when there's no consequences, I'm gonna keep doing it.
The police are, the police know too, so they're not picking them up.
We're not going, we're not going back and forth.
They're gonna get out, and that's what's happening. So they don't, they're just like, no, 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 you can't go back.
Not going back and forth.
But, you know.
Not going back and forth. So, if, if, it- That's where you're at. That's where you're at. Chief, I, I hate to put you on the spot again. How many guns have we, you feel comfortable telling that stat? How many weapons we've taken off the street this year, or do you have it on the tip of your tongue or not?
I, I, I have the numbers for last year, which was 277.
77, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 200.
277.
But-
277, but we're, we're, we're on pace, and I don't have the exact number.
That's okay, we're not gonna, we're not gonna hold you to it, but it's increased?
It, it, it has increased, the number of weapons that we've taken into custody have, have increased, and we've taken into evidence. And I'd like to just speak on a little quick, as they were talking about-
Sure.
Blacka County, um, the shooting that happened, and we did arrest two juveniles, and we did take two weapons off of juveniles. This morning, we were talking, we talked also about 200 Julian, um, the Alphasodarri area, that's what the basic is in the area. I don't know if you'll hear much about it, but we did pick someone up this afternoon with a shotgun, that they had inside of their jacket, under the filter. So we are, we are trying to make a difference, but we do need your help. Should ask, um, the ghost of the city.
I'm done.
Uh, Dr. Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, my condolences go to all those families who have had loved ones make their transition in life. We are with your families. Also, in terms of 200 Julian, this has been a consistent concern of mine since I came on the council. And we've made some improvements, but not enough. I continually get calls. It's an up-and-down situation, and, and my concern, mayor, is, yes, we're close to sealing the deal as far as new ownership. But new ownership can't do it by themselves. The residents in the building must take ownership. Uh, I was in the building a week before last. You know, they called Alderman Turner, they called me. Someone was shooting outside the building. Early in the morning. So when the new ownerships take place, will there be a meeting with those individuals who formed a group to make sure that the building can be safe? All the issues, the elevators, the stairwells, we were just over there, that someone called and said that the stairwell was locked, nailed shut, so you couldn't get out. There's trash all over the place. Uh, Chief of Staff, you know, met me over there, and they cleaned it up. But we should have to go over there for the building people to clean that particular area. The noise level is unbelievable. So just new ownership is not gonna do it. We gotta hold those individuals accountable, and make sure that elevators, floors, residents are moved out of that area if they cannot do what they're supposed to do according to their lease. As well as have the police presence, because there's only two police in that particular building. One sits at the desks, and the other one is on the floors. And that's not enough, because the residents that live to the north are constantly hearing noise and things of that nature. So hopefully, with the new ownership, we should meet with them and hold them accountable. Otherwise, the same thing will continue. And I understand we spend a lot of money on lawyers, but lawyers don't solve the problem. It's a collective effort with the residents, the police department, to get the job done. Also, more information will come out regarding, uh, Earth Week for the 4th Ward. We need to make sure that we had a dumpster at 200 Julian. It was filled up very quickly, and we had one at Weiss Field. So, once I get the exact locations, if they're the same as all the persons stated before, I'll get that information out to anyone. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
I will pass this evening.
I'll just make a couple of last announcements. Number one is when we do Earth Week, we will publish where, where they will be in each ward, where the dumpsters will be, and what days they will be. But if you find that that does not work for you, you may use the dumpsters and other wards to drop your stuff off. Um, again, to make things equitable, we would like you to use your ward and your ward days. But feel free, as a cleanup, also, if any of you have Boy Scouts, Girl Scout troops that you would like to participate in some of this, um, for cleanup in different areas, please let us know. And I'll address the last with 200 Julian. We have already been talking to this current owner, and he understands what the expectations are. Honestly, I, I, I can't say a lot publicly, but as we know, the former owner has been not only a difficult problem in Waukegan, but across the nation in just how bad things have been. I don't think we could have a worse, um, owner of a building than what is there now. And so, um, I'm looking forward to a new ownership that we can sit and work with. We had tried to work with the old owners, and that's why I ended up in court with them, because they were not cooperative and didn't really care. Um, we actually forced two security guards, um, which, before that, they had nothing. And so, why we have made strides, it's certainly not where I want to be for our community. And so that's why we did what we did in taking them to court. It has put them in a very awkward position across the country now, because other communities are now going after them as well. But this is just the start of a new phase of getting 200 Julian cleaned up. Um, but there was no way that that was gonna happen with the current owners. So, with that said, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Um, Alderman Turner was first, second, who was second? Alderman Kirkwood, all those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.